Thank you, Miles. Appreciate you being so flexible there. Uh, we have several public speakers signed up tonight, four to be exact. Our first public speaker, Jennifer Bowman. Jennifer?
Thank you very much for allowing me to take a few minutes of your time. I'm Jennifer Bowman. I live in Canal City now, but prior to moving, I lived on Franklin Avenue. If you're not familiar with it, it's a short, one-way street directly across Greenbrier from our Capitol and from the Culture Center. And the reason I'm speaking on this street, it's very problematic. And for me, it's a microcosm of everything that's wrong here in our city. We have some really bad landlords on that street. We have vacant buildings. We have an active drug dealer. We have a lot of crime. And I still have a lot of friends and neighbors who lived there, former neighbors. And when I lived there, the building was purchased by an absentee landlord who lives in Israel, and he refused to pay for any maintenance on the building. When the roof started leaking, the ceiling of my dining room fell in. And I just visited my former neighbor about a week ago. I'm assuming the roof has still not been repaired because the ceiling on the main access stairway had collapsed. I was furious. She has a 10-year-old daughter. She and her daughter could have been injured or worse. Next door, he owns that building as well. And I do have to thank, I believe, the Charleston Fire Department for shutting it down. I had complained about it many times, and code enforcement told me I couldn't file a grievance or complain because I didn't live there. But the roof on that building had already collapsed. There were no upstairs residents. But the two guys downstairs were definitely in substandard, dangerous conditions in a fire trap. And when the new fire chief was introduced last time I spoke, he sent an inspector out, and I noticed that building is now boarded up. Of course, that creates another problem, right? An abandoned building, an empty building. That encourages break-ins and vandalism. And buildings like that tend to get gutted. And as we know, sometimes set on fire and burned to the ground, endangering the entire neighborhood. Down the street, I don't have to say suspected drug dealer, possible drug dealer. No, drug dealer, convicted drug dealer. He and his wife have been in and out of jail for possession, intent to sale. And they have not been evicted, which I understand is the code in the city. And I'm puzzled by that. But it really creates a negative environment. And there are a lot of young families. This is sort of, I would say, an upcoming blended neighborhood. It has ethnic blend, and most people are, I would say, fairly low income. But they're all working people. They're working hard, and they have kids. And there are kids on each side of that townhome where that drug dealer is living. It's a terrible situation. The trash, the crime, my car was broken into. I never got mail there. It was constantly stolen unless I happened to meet the mailman as they made the delivery. And those kind of things could really be addressed on this small, short street and perhaps corrected and applied other places in the city. One last thing before I close off here. We have a church, a very historic church there. Are you guys familiar with Rough and Memorial? It's over 100 years old. I don't know the current status. I will wrap it. The last I heard, it was for sale. And there was a church, a congregation from Africa, from Nigeria, who wanted to buy it. And I would love to see them get some assistance to do that because they would be a positive influence on the neighborhood, I promise you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Jennifer. Appreciate you. Our next public speaker, Josh Browning.
Yeah, how you doing? I'm Josh Browning. I'm actually from St. Albans. And I just wanted to let y'all know that there's video out there on the internet of one of your cop cars coming to St. Albans, getting out of the car, taking somebody out of that car, taking the cuffs off of them, and then leaving. So, and as far, as long as the rumors have been going around, I cannot believe that this is a, you know, one-time occurrence. So... There you go.
Thank you, Mr. Browning. Our next public speaker, Jenny Harless. Jenny?
Mayor Goodwin and council members. Mayor, if I can have your attention. My name is Jenny Harless, and I'm one of the women victimized by your former chief, Ty Hunt. I am here today to address the appalling lack of accountability and justice for his actions. During my time in the chief's office at City Hall, Chief Hunt, undressed, exposed himself to me, and pulled me on top of him despite my clear refusal. He used his position of power to intimidate, harass me, leaving me feeling violated and unprotected. My story has been shared in my own words, and I urge you to listen to the podcast where I detail the traumatic experience I endured at the hands of Chief Hunt. And I want to make it perfectly clear that I have never had a sexual relation with Tye. And I have submitted a polygraph test to each and every one of you that confirms this fact. The role of the chief of police is to ensure the safety and protection of all individuals. Yet Chief Hunt's actions have caused irreparable harm to my mental health. The failure to hold him accountable sends a dangerous message that abuse of power and dishonesty are acceptable within Charleston Police Department. I am deeply disappointed by the punishment given to the former chief and by the lack of support that I have received from this administration. It is unacceptable that my pleas for help have been ignored, and I am appalled by the indifference shown toward his victims. I hope that none of you or your loved ones ever go through what I did. If they do, I pray that they get the support that I would deny.
Madam Mayor and council members, thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. So, real quickly, I am a resident on the West Side of Charleston, on Greenwood Avenue in what is now called Historic Luna Park. And of course, I've been here. I bought my house in '95. Love Charleston, born and raised, have lived there, love West Side. And we have survived a lot of things. Most recently was the gas and water crisis. But we were made whole, and the response to that was phenomenal. And we received new water tanks and new furnaces. And then Thursday night, the rain came, and the sewage system backed up. And myself and many of my neighbors' basements flooded. My family room is gone. So, the new hot water tank and the new furnace is now destroyed. So, what I'm hoping is that the city's response will be similar to how the gas company responded, and they will respond to myself and my neighbors and take responsibility for this old and ancient sewage system. We've had problems over the years, but it's never been this bad. And a lot of my family earlins have been destroyed, and it's going to cost us some money. And so, I just want to make sure that the city is aware of it, that someone is looking into it, and that we will be made whole and it will be taken care of. Thank you for your time.
Uh, skedaddled tonight. I wanted to just make sure Andrew or somebody gave your telephone number. Just make sure I have it. Thank you so much. Thank you to all of our public speakers tonight. When the clerk gets settled, if he can read the claims against the city, that'd be great.
A claim of Shawna Atkinson, Charleston, West Virginia alleges personal injury. A claim of Arnette Davis, Charleston, West Virginia alleges damage to property. A claim of Amanda Townsend, Charleston, West Virginia alleges loss of property.
Thank you. Please refer to the city solicitor. Clerk, please read the appointment.
I recommend the following individual be appointed to the Charleston Green Team. Ryan Hugh fills a vacant seat. I respectfully request city council's approval of this recommendation.
Madam President. Thank you. Of course, open for discussion on the appointment. Question is, force confirmation? All in favor, vote aye. All opposed, nay. Appointment's confirmed. Clerk, please read the next appointment.
I recommend Mark Davis be appointed to the Public Arts Commission with a term set to end February 7th of 2027. In addition, I recommend Dwayne Duncan and Kay Goodwin be reappointed to the Public Arts Commission. Both their terms will expire February 7th of 2028. I respectfully request city council's approval of this recommendation.
Madam President. Second. Floor is open for discussion. The appointment question is, confirmation? All in favor, vote aye. All opposed, nay. Appointments are confirmed. Clerk, please read the next appointment.
I recommend Jack Rossi be reappointed to the Charleston Sanitary Board. His term is set to expire May 17th, March 17th, 2027. I respectfully request city council's approval of this recommendation.
Madam President. Thanks so much. Floor is open for, thank you, sorry. Uh, floor is open for discussion. Question is, confirmation? All in favor, vote aye. But all opposed, vote nay. Appointments are confirmed.
I recommend Chris Bly be reappointed to the Charleston Urban Renewal Authority. His term is set to end March 3rd of 2029. I respectfully request city council's approval of this recommendation.
Madam President. Floor is open for discussion on this appointment. Question is, confirmation? All in favor, vote aye. All opposed, nay. Appointment is confirmed. Please note that Bill Number 8030 was removed from the agenda. It'll be taken up at our next regular scheduled meeting. Clerk, now please read the committee report, Bill Number 8031.
Bill Number 8031, a bill to amend the municipal code relating to updating the regulation of private outdoor designated areas to be consistent with state code changes and creating the East End Pota, and reports the same to council with recommendation that the committee report be adopted as a committee substitute.
Councilmember Pepper.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, this bill amends the private outdoor designated area ordinances to add a new Pota district in the East End neighborhood as well as to update sections of our code to reflect changes in the state Pota law. Uh, the new proposed district will go on Washington Street from Trey's Barber Shop to Tricky Fish, and on Elizabeth Street from the red carpet parking lot to the YWCA Center for Racial Equity and Inclusion. Uh, the hours of the Pota are the same as the other POTAs. Um, in terms of the general code changes, the Class S4 permit has been changed to be called a Class S4 special permit, thanks to our state legislature and a few other changes. Um, on behalf of the Committee on Ordances and Rules, I move for adoption of the bill.
Uh, Councilwoman Snodgrass, have a question, ma'am?
Um, yeah, can I, we have a roll call vote, please.
Uh, Councilwoman Kearns?
I was just wondering if we have any statistics about how the other POTAs are doing and if they are being utilized every night of the week or if there are certain nights it's more utilized. Uh, because the original resolution was for them to be open Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. And then on the floor, it got changed to seven days a week. Also, it was supposed to originally have been from May till, I think, October, month of October, which would include all the dining outs and most of the fairs and festivals. And then it was changed to year-round. Um, and I was just wondering if it was being utilized in an adequate manner. I've also heard lots of reports that the Pota cups are not being used, and people are taking six packs of bottles out of some of the different breweries.
Well, I could go ahead and speak to a couple. I'll ask our senior staff team to jump in if they, if they have anything to add. I will say this. I'm a big believer in the year of three. I think any program or thing that you start in any part of the city, I don't care if it's an event, as some of the council members who I've worked with for years know how I feel about this. I think that you have to look and see the longevity of it, right? What works, what doesn't work. Actually, the market, God bless you, will decide that. Um, and businesses will, you know, what their, uh, what their business model and business plan is. Uh, but I will say that we've had such a short period of time. So, for us to stand here and say it's a huge success or it's, it's growing, I do know that. Um, I hear from business owners every day. I hear from people every day across the city. I think downtown is probably the area in which you've seen the most utilization. And of course, that was during the winter months. I think it'll change. And so, if you asked me this question at the end of summer, I think I would have a better, uh, a better answer for you. Uh, but suffice it to say, I think that it is working as it was intended and as the majority of council voted on it. Towards the end, there were some changes. That's what you're alluding to. Any, anybody else want to add anything? Yeah, it was.
Just to your second point about it changing from May to October till year-round. I don't think in Charleston's bill there was ever any plan for it to be just a certain...
Honeymooned.
Honeymooned, but very early on, a committee decided to do it year-round. Uh, there were some tweaks to the hours. That is true. But I just wanted to point out that I don't, I don't think it was ever under consideration to just do it for a period of time throughout the year.
Does that answer your questions? Councilwoman Kearns?
It does, but, you know, I, I still don't think that, in my opinion, I don't think people in the desert winter are going to be walking around carrying drinks. And I also had concerns about families bringing their children to the Christmas parade, people with open containers drinking on the street. Those were my main concerns.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, floor is open for discussion on the passage of this bill. The clerk will, please call the roll.
Annie Burka Burton separately. Cook Fegery Farrell Giannola Haas Hoover Jenkins Jones Kearns King Minardi Moore Overstreet Pepper Farr Robinson Rubio Salango Snodgrass Solomon Steelhammer Taylor Mayor Goodwin.
Resolution Number 952-24, authorizing approval of Amendment Number 5 of the Fiscal Year 2023-2024 General Fund Budget as indicated on the attached list of accounts, and reports the same to council with the recommendation that the committee report be adopted.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. This amends the budget to take into account the unassigned fund balance after the final audit of $521,822 and allocates it to various funds through the city, including professional services to update the bike plan that was last done in 2016, uh, to provide load-bearing vests for the police department, um, materials and supplies for the public grounds, including signs, banners, and other items, uh, particularly in conjunction with the cycling event coming up, and money to parks and rec for the food program for the youth, and finally, to the Capital Projects Fund for extra paving to get it started uh, prior to the new budget coming out in July 1st. And therefore, your Finance Committee recommends the approval of this amendment.
Thank you. Floor is open for discussion on this resolution. Question is, the adoption of the resolution. The clerk will, please call the roll.
Annie Burka Burton separately. Cook Fegery Farrell Giannola Haas Hoover Jenkins Jones Kearns King Minardi Moore Overstreet Pepper Farr Robinson Rubio Salango Snodgrass Solomon Steelhammer Taylor Mayor Goodwin.
Yes. I think the majority declare Resolution 953-24 as adopted. Clerk, now please read the committee report and Resolution 954-24.
Resolution Number 954-24, authorizing the mayor or city manager to grant American Rescue Plan Act funds to the Charleston Land Reuse Agency in the total amount of $1,500,000 and to execute appropriate agreements establishing the terms and conditions imposed upon the recipient. And reports the same to council with recommendation that the committee report be adopted.
Councilmember Jenkins?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. This essentially allocates through the sub-receipient uh, grant agreement for ARPA funds that had privately, previously been approved by council uh, to give the money to the CLRA for their programs in use and rehabilitating and, uh, working on the abandoned homes and other properties throughout the city. And therefore, your Finance Committee recommends the approval of this resolution.
Second. Thank you so much. Floor is open for discussion on this resolution. Uh, Councilmember Giannola.
Uh, I don't, I don't think it's an issue, and I don't think it's a conflict. But I do like to remind council that Councilmember Pepper and I are on the seat of Charleston Land Reuse Agency, and, uh... Okay, I just want to make that clear, put that on the record.
And you do an outstanding job on the committee, and we appreciate your help. Thank you so much. Floor is open for discussion. Um, question is, the adoption of the resolution? All in favor, vote aye. All opposed, nay, and declare Resolution 954-24 as adopted. Uh, we're now going to vote on and discuss 953-24.
Resolution Number 953-24, authorizing approval of Amendment Number 6 of the Fiscal Year 2023-2024 General Fund Budget as indicated on the attached list of accounts, and reports the same to council with recommendation that the committee report be adopted.
Councilmember Jenkins, just keeping you on your toes tonight. Go forward, go backwards.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, the legislature had recently passed the Emergency Medical Services Salary Enhancement Fund, of which we are receiving from the state $99,951 um, to provide a one-time salary incentive to all active EMS personnel. Uh, this goes to the Charleston Fire Department, where all uniformed members are EMS-trained, and so they will all share this enhancement fund. And therefore, your Finance Committee recommends approval of this amendment.
Thank you so much. Floor is open for discussion on this, uh, resolution. Question is, its adoption? The clerk will, please call the roll. Madam President? There's a motion on the floor to contend with previous roll call. Here, seeing no objections, previous roll call stands. Uh, declare Resolution 953-24 as adopted. Thank you so much for that catch. Thank you. Uh, clerk, please read the committee report and Resolution 955-24.
Resolution Number 955-24, authorizing the mayor or city manager to enter into a contract with Plaxton &amp; Sons to purchase various classes of Portland cement on an ad-needed basis pursuant to a competitive bidding process, and reports the same to council with the recommendation that the committee report be adopted.
Councilmember Jenkins?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. This is an annual bid and contract that we put out to lock in prices for Portland cement, uh, for a year. And therefore, your Finance Committee recommends it's approved.
Thank you. Floor is open for discussion on this resolution. Question is, the adoption? All in favor, vote aye. All opposed, nay. Declare Resolution 955-24 as adopted. Clerk, now please read the committee report, Resolution 956-24.
Resolution Number 956-24, authorizing the mayor or city manager to enter into a contract with Martin Marietta Materials, Inc. to purchase various classes and sizes of aggregate stone on an ad-needed basis pursuant to a competitive bidding process, and reports the same to council with the recommendation that the committee report be adopted.
Councilmember Jenkins?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Similar to the prior resolution, this is an annual bid and contract that goes out to lock in prices for aggregate stone um, to be used by the public grounds or public works department. And therefore, your Finance Committee recommends it's approved.
Floor is open for discussion on the resolution. Question is, adoption? All in favor, vote aye. All opposed, nay, declare Resolution 956-24 as adopted. Clerk, now please read the committee report and Resolution 957-24.
Resolution Number 957-24, authorizing the mayor or city manager to enter into a contract with Field Turf USA, Inc. for the turfing of North Charleston Community Center multi-use field to include a turf, a playing field for baseball, football, and soccer in the amount not to exceed $1,200,000, where $250,000 is provided by a federal grant, and the remaining $950,000 was approved in the city's fiscal year 2024 budget, and where the price was determined by a competitive bid multi-state source well contract, and reports the same to council with recommendation that the committee report be adopted.
Councilmember Jenkins?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. This is a, a good project to work on the field behind the North Charleston Community Center. Um, that'll be a multi-use baseball and football field as well as soccer. And other uses will also be looked at as part of this. Again, as mentioned, it's paid for with what was budgeted as well as a grant that will be, that we will be receiving. And therefore, your Finance...
Long overdue. These young kids been playing on the field that's not even safe to run. And I appreciate the city family doing something for Charleston. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you so much for your support of this. Councilmember Taylor?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. During our Finance Committee meeting, prior to city council meeting, TV, um, I also asked that the field, when it's lined for sports, be considered also for lacrosse. Uh, lacrosse is a growing competitive sport here in the Valley, especially here in Charleston. Uh, I know for a fact, in my experience with lacrosse here in Charleston, that the West Side is underserved. There are fantastic athletes on the West Side who want to play but have to travel to other teams to participate. Um, I know that there are coaches that are available that want to teach young boys and girls how to play lacrosse, to ask that when the field is lined, that be considered. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Uh, anybody else have their hand up? I'll say that I actually texted Coach Brad White after that and said, "Sean Taylor and I were talking about this. How many fields are lined for lacrosse?" Uh, and he said, he rattled off a couple, but not many, two, three, and said, "Find any field you can. I'll get kids there to play every night." I'm like, I, I'm just asking the question. But that's the excitement. Do you know Brad? Uh, you know that that is his excitement, and for the kids as well. Uh, Councilmember Giannola, did you have your hand up, sir?
Uh, yes, ma'am. I would just like to second, uh, my esteemed council members' thoughts here and the mayor's as well. Um, my children were introduced to lacrosse through a grant program a few years ago, and, um, it's really spectacular. And, um, their team frequently puts on clinics for kids who want to learn, and I'm sure they would take full advantage of that. So, uh, I would second those sentiments. Thank you.
Thank you so much. All apologies to baseball players, but as a hockey mom, hockey moms know that kids who play hockey don't play baseball. They play lacrosse. Uh, Councilwoman Fegery?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, I would be remiss if I did not mention that a young lady, uh, that is from Charleston, West Virginia. Her mother's a teacher at George Washington High School. She is an avid lacrosse player. She, uh, tried out and made, uh, she has dual citizenship. Uh, and she plays for the Jamaica Olympic team. And, uh, I'm sure that, uh, the closeness that I have with her family, I just think we all need to remember, uh, Alicia Davis because she is an avid, uh, lacrosse advocate for men and women. Thank you.
Maybe she can come back and do a free clinic. Uh, thank you so much. Uh, question is, um, any more comments, questions, suggestions? Question is, the adoption? All in favor, vote aye. All opposed, nay. Declare Resolution 957-24 as adopted. Clerk, please read the report of officers.
Municipal Court Report to City Council, month ending March 2024. Report of City of Charleston Payroll Variants Analysis, January 2024. Report of the City of Charleston Payroll Variants Analysis, February 2024. Planning Department Annual Report, 2023. City Treasurers Report to Council, month ending March 2024.
Thank you so much. Uh, a couple of, uh, quick announcements tonight and just reminders for the good of the group before we close out council this evening. Uh, first and foremost, um, I, I want to mention that we lost a member um, of our Public Works Department, Mr. Eastman. And so, I just wanted to, um, say thank you publicly for his, uh, life of service um, to the city, um, and to his community, and, um, just make that recognition and know that many heavy hearts in our Public Works Department tonight. So, thank you, Brent, for, for being here, uh, and those who knew Mr. Eastman, uh, as well. Also want to give great thanks to, again, the Public Works Department, but also, uh, our Fire Department, our Rescue, uh, our Police Department, um, ev, every city employee and others and council members during, uh, the, um, the horrific weather that we've had. Uh, you know, as I said to one woman as I was going door-to-door with Brent Webster, um, who, she had a tree in her living room. She said, we, you know, it's, it's gone, but we're not, and that's okay. Um, that was hard for other families to believe when we would drive to another part of the city, and there might have been a twig in their yard. Uh, it was devastating for a lot of families, uh, in the city and throughout Canal County and West Virginia. Um, and so, thank you to our teams. I am always reminded when I get out there and walk... I am always reminded when I get out there and walk, um, for hours and hours, hours, nights, weekends, holidays. Um, council members, uh, who I also saw Bobby Haas, uh, with a rake and shovel. I mean, come on, it doesn't get any better than that. Um, but that's, that's what we do. That's what we do. And so, um, when people heard, I, I say all the time, I love working in municipal government because that's, that's what we do, uh, and we're here to serve, um, and, and get out and help people. So, thank you for allowing me to be a very small part, um, in all of the cleanup and rescue and recovery and, uh, our EMS, the folks and our firefighters calmed a lot of folks when they showed up on their front doorstep. So, thanks, guys. Appreciate that. Um, I made the mistake of sending the email with the wrong time, I think last week. So, clarification, uh, the, uh, council meeting, uh, is tomorrow. Uh, the mandatory levy meeting will start here in council chambers at five thirty. Five thirty is our council meeting tomorrow. Uh, immediately following that, uh, at five forty-five, we are having DEI training with YWCA's Racial Equity and Inclusion Program. Uh, we have a lot of RSVPs, uh, already thirty now. Thank you. Good. We'd love to have everybody here. If you haven't, please RSVP to Andrew and just because we got to get materials and things and, uh, cause all of our directors are coming, all of our senior staff are coming, uh, as well. As a reminder, our team up to clean up, thanks, uh, to all of you who joined us at our team up to clean up our first event, which was in Canow City, uh, because of the storm damage. Again, credit where credit is due, our Public Works team were out there, forty-five tons is what we picked up, forty-five tons, lot of trees, lot of branches, but a lot of picking litter too, a lot of good UC kids that came out to help us, just so great. Um, and so we had a great, great turnout. Uh, please don't forget that west side is this Saturday and we're meeting at the KRT on Stockton. Uh, we'll have all the supplies there. We have an awesome, amazing group of people that have already signed up and my favorite group of volunteers in the city, the Women of Recovery, uh, point because they come out en masse, they're so good, they're so energetic and jovial and they work harder than like, I'll try to keep up, I will not be able to do it. Uh, I wanted to make a couple of those things and then finally, uh, want to let you know that the Capital Connector Meeting, we had an internal team with all of our directors, uh, and folks involved with the Boulevard, want to let you know that we're working on a public input session for that. I think it's going to be the seventh, Andrew? Is that right? May seventh. So, that's a tentative for warning, it's fair warning, if you'd like to participate, many council members did. Uh, thank you, Councilmember Pepper and Councilmember Hoover for participating in that first kind of, um, casual conversation, but this will be a little bit more robust and a larger conversation, but there's always great input too, but that'll happen May seventh. Uh, those are the announcements that I have for this portion. Uh, are there any other remarks or announcements? We've got a lot. Uh, Councilmember King, we're going to start with you, sir.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, I would, uh, like to publicly thank all members of the Public Works Department for what they have done in the past couple of weeks. These guys are amazing. Um, in, in my ward in Canow City, we had a lot of trees down, big trees, and these guys were there, uh, immediately to help homeowners when they could and it was great. I appreciate you guys, Brent, Bill Tate, Mike Davis, you guys are great and all, all the guys that worked, worked with you. I appreciate you. Um, and I'd also like to say, and this is not a dig on, um, the, uh, the, uh, the city, but I would like to say there have been a lot of trees down that have been in the city right of way, uh, the past couple of weeks and, and in the past, the city insurance has denied those claims, but I encourage every homeowner, if you have a tree in your, in your yard, you may think that it's in your yard, but it might be in the city right of way, please file a claim with our city insurance, see if they will, will help you out, okay? They, they may not because they've declined claims in the past, which I think is bullshit, but, um, please, uh, file those claims, okay? File those claims against our insurance, see if they will help you out. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Other, uh, hands, I'm sorry, there were too many to pop up. I'm going to try to get to all of them. I'm going to play this game tonight. Uh, Councilwoman Snodgrass, you go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, I'm going to take, um, in the words of Jennifer Farm, I'm going to take a few minutes. Um, there are three things that you can always count on that I'm going to champion and that's women, transparency, and law enforcement. Here we are, seven months after an investigation that was started by the Professional Standards Division into two sexual misconduct complaints of then Chief Hunt, which should have occurred when Ms. Jenny Harless filed a complaint with the city almost three years ago. Instead, an investigation into Ms. Harless's complaint was done behind closed doors and never made public. Ms. Harless decided to come forward, only then, one year later, did the city reveal that there was an investigation and Hunt admitted to being suspended for three days. Soon after, another woman, ex-officer Chelsea McCoy, came forward and also filed a complaint with the Professional Standards Division. She alleged sexual misconduct and that a polygraph test she took was altered by Hunt, her superior. Ms. McCoy has also filed suit against the city, Corporal Hunt and Sergeant Richie Bassford. I continue to be astonished at the handling of these cases surrounding Corporal Hunt from an administration that professes to champion women. However, in the first six months of this administration, there were ten or so women that were fired for far less infractions than what has been investigated against Chief Hunt, Corporal Hunt. Chief Dempsey unfortunately inherited this debacle. He reported last week publicly that the investigation from PSD had concluded early last week and Hunt received a double promotion and, um, a suspension. Uh, he now is corporal rank and a suspension. No other details were provided to the public. I hope that these two women find some vindication in the outcome of punishment levying. Constituents and members of the public are in disbelief that not one, but two complaints of sexual misconduct, misuse of city property and devices resulted in such a light punishment falling short of termination. This now has paved a way to, for Corporal Hunt to get full medical or non-medical retirement at the taxpayer's expense. Any other organization or corporation would have found these acts terminable offenses. This administration ran on the platform of transparency. I am calling that the results of the Professional Standards Division investigation that lasted seven months and was paid for with taxpayer money be released to the public. The public deserves to know how these allegations involving sexual misconduct on public property, property, misuse of public devices, and altering a polygraph test received only a suspension and a demotion. The fact that Corporal Hunt was not fired has lowered the bar to an all-time low for future disciplinary actions of any city employee. The liability to the city moving forward is immeasurable. Actions speak louder than words and the handling of Hunt's investigation, his demotion, and the secrecy surrounding it all demonstrates this administration does not champion women or value transparency to the public. Why the special treatment of the mayor's appointed chief? This is a question that should be answered. In closing, I ask if any of these allegations were not a terminable offense, then please tell me what is. Thank you.
Thank you so much. More hands up. We're going back and forth. Uh, Councilwoman Kearns, go ahead.
That I served in the military for about twenty-four years. Of that, about twenty years of it, I was an equal opportunity NCO and I handled, um, sexual complaints of women and men in the military. Um, so I'm very familiar with what is considered wrong and right in the appoint, in the workplace. Consensual sex is between two people who say yes, also referred to as panky panky in the workplace. However, non-consensual sex is also called rape, attempted rape, unwanted sexual advances, and abuse of power. Not recognizing what was, what occurred has set a new low precedence of what is expected of our police officers. I find that appalling and I also hope that if I'm ever in need of a police officer because I have been abused or raped or anything else has happened, that it's not Corporal Hunt that would appear. I hope that it would not appear, he would not appear for any of our young ladies or women in the city. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Our next, uh, who's going to close it out for us? I've got two more. I've got, I've got a couple more. Uh, Councilmember Jones, you go right ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I just wanted to tell everybody, this past weekend I was in Pittsburgh.
Yes, sir.
For a basketball tournament. They had ninety basketball, four, full-court basketballs since in a convention center. I'd say there was probably four thousand girl, is it all-girls tournament? And it ran from eight o'clock in the morning to eleven o'clock at night constantly, every hour there was a different game going on. You could watch from fourth grade to the twelfth grade, college coaches everywhere. The linebacker up probably the South Side Bridge tried to get in to just get a ticket to come in and watch the kids play. I was there from eight o'clock in the morning to eight o'clock at night, Saturday, and the restaurants, restaurants were packed. Hotels for fifteen miles around Pittsburgh were completely booked. It was so crowded. The hotels agreed to give fifty dollars out of their room rates for each room that was booked for the athletes. Think about this, that was given back to the city from the hotels, they were making so much money. And I ran into two council people from Pittsburgh and you know what they, I was telling them about the sports complex for one field and the first words out of their mouth were, we argue this, not to let this tournament come to Pittsburgh. Build it and they will come. That is what a council person told me. It is the most unbelievable thing you can ever see. I, I, I can't even explain it. Ninety basketball games going on at one time. It is, and there's money to be made, folks. I'm telling you, it is unbelievable the money that went through this place, fifty-five dollars a person to get in. That was for the three days. You had to put a wristband on like you put on at the hospital and if you took it off, you bought another one the next day.
It's a forty billion dollar industry.
Bank of the thousands and thousands and thousands that bought a fifty-five dollar bracelet. That's all I've got. It's just amazing.
Oh, thank you, thank you.
And there was for the sports complex, but if it's going to bring it to this city, bring it on.
Thank you, thank you so much, Councilmember Jones. I should have shipped you to Pittsburgh a long time ago. Uh, thank you so much. Uh, there are a couple other hands up. Uh, Councilwoman Fegrey, you want to speak and then Councilmember Moore, you want to close us out, sir? Councilwoman Fegrey.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A couple of things, um, the night that the rain came down, there were several folks that I individually reached out to because I had a, a mother and, uh, her daughter calling me for help. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Chief Sutton. Thank you, Chief Director Webster. Thank you, Jared Lanham. I call in Major Garten, thank him, the Charleston Police Department, the Charleston Fire Department. They immediately answered when I reached out to them and this was in a matter of thirty minutes from the flooding starting. Going to die, Grant. And thank you to this administration and to those that I mentioned for being there at, at my beck and call, is all I can say. The rain came so fast that I don't know how anyone could have been any more attentive or concerned about the well-being of citizens of Charleston, particularly those on Garrison Avenue, particularly those on Chandler Drive, Sugar Creek area, the Woodward Drive area. And I, I want to, uh, thank you all from the bottom of my heart. The other thing I want to say is, you know, I'm just a old west side girl. I try, just trying to make a difference in her neighborhood and the city she loves. So, I want to leave you all with this. If I sit here and I have sit, or is it sat? I'm sure someone will get that for me, but I have sat here, listened and listened and listened. Are we going to continue to be the dead horse? You know what that means? Look it up, because it's an old saying here in West Virginia. Don't throw stones if you live in a glass house. That's another big saying in West Virginia. Something that my mother always said to me or that I heard her say to other parents who were gossiping about maybe their son or daughter smoking crack or maybe going down to the mall and put a pair of earrings or at Kmart, put a pair of socks in their pocket. Be cautious of what you say about other people's children because you never know what yours are going to do. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
I was, I, I was hiding. Yeah. Um, so tomorrow we have our annual research day at CMC. Um, one thing that, and I will admit this, we don't do a good job with, uh, our hospital is marketing ourselves. We have two, we train two hundred and fifteen fellows of residents in the valley in Charleston. Tomorrow is them in, having their exhibition of research. We have corporate sponsorships from, uh, for food, so come in anytime. It's from eight in the morning to around six o'clock tomorrow. If you come in for five minutes, we'll scare you with a case report, something you don't want to happen to you and then we'll feed you. Um, we're providing breakfast, lunch, and dinner if you want to hang out with us all day. Everyone's invited. Uh, the other thing I wanted, want to say is, so in the past two weeks, we've had the tornadoes, we've had the flooding. The tornadoes for me was probably the lowest point of me being on council because you saw all the destruction and in my mind, I was, I hope someone's not hurt and, you know, knocking on wood, I, no one was, um, but there was a lot of destruction and the first thing I saw was, you know, I will echo some other members of council, I'm just some guy at the end of the day. So, I decided to go out and drive around with my wife, try to just let, be a warm body. The first thing I saw was the city works department, the city, all of our unsung heroes out there helping. And, you know, the calming force was Brent Webster and his staff and everybody that just killed themselves to make the community safe. And I can't thank you enough, everyone that's in those departments for everything you do. And I don't think there's anything we can do as a council. I wish we could pay them more, uh, from the city budget to thank them for that. And then we had the flooding. And I had, I was there till three in the morning in my own house, having six inches of water in my own home, everything going and again, city's there again to help. And we get a lot of grief for being on council at times, well, Charleston should do this, Charleston should do that. One of my new employees in our department at the hospital, he moved from Chicago and he had said that after all this had happened, he moved downtown Charleston, he's like, the city's great, Chicago wouldn't have done this if he'd see someone two hours later. And that made me feel really good because it means we're doing something proactive and people feel like we're taking care of, doing what the job that we were elected to do. So, I'm going to get off my soapbox here, I'm sure everyone wants to go home, but I just want to say to the city employees, I really appreciate everything you do and everyone at my work does.
Frank, I can promise, or Councilmember, sorry, but Councilmember Anne, I can tell you right now, and I'm, I'm looking at Brent and everybody in the back, uh, that means a lot to them because that will get back to them, that you took the time to say that about them, that you took the time to say it about them and thank them because they are unsung heroes. They are out night, weekends, holidays, in the dark when nobody's there with them, helping them. And so it does mean a lot and that is worth staying, that's worth staying around the clock, uh, to give praise. And so it does mean a lot and that is worth staying, that's worth staying around the clock, uh, to give praise and thanks to the people who are doing the hard work uh, and the service work that we're supposed to, to do. Because it's not glamorous, it's not fun, but they do it with gusto. Councilmember Moore, I'm so sorry.
No, you're fine.
Sir, you're closing us out.
Now, I'm going to try to be quick though, but, uh, I got a couple of things. Um, I got a call from a constituent that lives in a new apartment building that was just built and it's for fifty-five and up. It's a lower income disabled. And it's kind of bad. The building's only been built for like eight months. They got all kinds of damages to it. But the worst part of it is that is the ownership or management kind of got on the lady for speaking up and, uh, they wanted to do like a neighborhood, like a apartment, I guess, meeting group. They kind of, they cut the line that, and they, a lady, she had a letter sent to her, I guess, from management about her not speaking up about apartments. But what, what kind of scares me the most is that this same company is building the apartments at Charleston Forest and it's for the same demographic of people. So, well, no, I was told it's for working class, so they want to charge like fifty thousand dollars per. Well, people make fifty thousand dollars or more to move to these apartments. But if you're going to build this apartment, like the ones that are built now, if you're making fifty thousand dollars, you're not going to live in them. So my thing is this is going to happen. It scares me is that you're not going to waste money. So you're going to build a million dollars for this apartment complex. So if it's not up to par and people are taking a certain amount of money, they're going to move downtown to these nicer condos. So what's going to happen is that you got this apartment sitting empty. You got to rent them to anybody. And it kind of scares me because our neighborhood already is going through a, a bad situation. So when I know what's going to happen, it's going to end up being what we're going through already. So hopefully some things happen. I'm praying, but you know, it's, it's kind of scary though. The one thing I do also, I want to thank for the lights that's been put up on the West Side. They're bright, streets are bright and we can see and everybody's happy. Some people complain, but you can't make everybody happy, but I, I love them though. And once again, thank the Public Works, once again too, like I said, when, when the flooding hit, I had a lady that called me that lives on Global Drive and talked to Matt on Friday and the sanitary board that got over there quick to her. And somebody else called me and Matt's taking care of hers too, so thank y'all and everybody from the city, from the police. Public Works, our department, y'all guys are A1, best in the state. And then, uh, one thing else too, the football fields, it's going to be a, a game changer because what it is right now, a entity wouldn't let our kids in because they said they didn't want to play at North Charleston Field. They had all kinds of excuses because, oh, North Charleston is it. So now we're going to have a field comparable better than what they play at now. And, um, that's the one thing, they can't say that against us anymore, which is going to be a good thing and our kids deserve it. I mean, I'm telling you, we, our kids deserve it because it's going to be a thing because what they want to do always is move our kids out of our community to other spots. They want to take them and poach them and take them to other spots. So this is going to be a good thing. And like you said, also, I want to speak on the lacrosse. Jimmy Hill has already talked to me before the field even got built about lacrosse field. So I talked to Jimmy Hill like a long time ago. Jimmy Hill coaches Capital High. Jimmy Hill, matter of fact, he has, his, both his sons played lacrosse. One played at Morris Hill. Yeah, yeah, yeah. And one played at, uh, AV and he also, I had a kid that played football for me that's graduating from, uh, Lord's College in May, that's playing lacrosse. So I mean, we already been, that's already been the talk about it, you know what I'm saying? So we just, some things you keep in our pocket, you know what I mean? Cause Jimmy already wants to get a few of our kids that could play the sport. And also another baseball field down there would be good because our kids need to get back into baseball because it's kind of killing us at the high school level. Cause we have kids that want to play baseball, don't start playing at high school, middle school, and it's killing like, uh, middle schools and high schools. But once again, thank y'all for it, city. We appreciate you. Thank you done for us and everybody have a good night.
Thank you all and, and, and thanks to everybody for working on, on that with us. Uh, it was great. Uh, he thought he was going to get out of here without recognition or without us reminding everyone. But tonight is Captain Pride Moore's very last council before he retires. Get up here. Come here. Come here. I told you I was going to get you. I told you I was going to get you. Thank you so much, everyone. Uh, the clerk, uh, will now please call the roll.
Annie Burka Burton separately, Cook, Fegery, Farrell, Gianola, Haas, Hoover, Jenkins, Jones, Kearns, King, Minardi, Moore, Overstreet, Pepper, Farr, Robinson, Rubio, Salango, Snodgrass, Solomon, Steelhammer, Taylor, Mayor Goodwin.
Just want to remind everybody that our next regular scheduled meeting is May sixth at, um, seven PM. But I've moved that city council be adjourned until tomorrow, April sixteenth at five thirty PM.